So, good morning. This is April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. And Knox County Commissioners, Mount Vernon, Ohio. We're gonna start out with three bid openings, one scheduled at ten o'clock. Um, all three of these are for the Knox County Engineer. And the first one is for the annual resurfacing for two thousand twenty five. Uh, the first bid that we are opening is from Smalls Asphalt Paving Incorporated. And um, this document, which is about one tree processed.
We use all the trees off Dambalam here.
Yeah, yeah, so we we economize, make sure. Okay, so and then it's broken down for um, so the people will know that the bid includes resurfacing for Big Run Road, Murray Road, McLarnan Road, Ridge Road, Blue Road, Tucker Road, uh, Raven Road, Mickley Road, Flat Run Road, Butler Road, Pipesville Road, Wally Road, and Sycamore Road. And so the total bid for those roads is two million two hundred and ninety eight thousand two hundred and seventy three dollars, ninety five cents. So, two two nine eight two seven three point nine five, two million two hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars and ninety five cents. Do we have any other bids? That is the only bid that we have at this point. Um, did you have a bid spec? Uh, yeah, you had a bid spec of uh
Two million, three seventy six.
Two million, three seventy six, two fifty nine, not seventy five, so uh, we will hand this over to Cameron, our engineer. For that bid, we do have to wait a couple minutes for the next bid since at ten oh five, Knox County Commissioner has a Mischy Road resurfacing and Ohio Public Works uh Commission of two thousand twenty five and again, the Ohio Public Works Commission, that's what's issue two on that ballot. So we want people to make sure they go out and vote. If you haven't voted yet, shame on you. I get out there and do your civic duty and uh please consider voting for issue two. Jason, I don't know.
So we've got one, you got less than a minute.
Okay.
Go ahead and do this next item.
So we're gonna go ahead and start opening packages for the Mischy Road resurfacing for two thousand twenty five. We have one, one uh, bids for that. And I assume that is from uh Smalls Asphalt and Paving.
And you're good, Commissioner. It's ten oh five, so you can
Okay, so at ten oh five, we will be reading this bid. And again, this is Mischy Road. Does have different specs here about the bonded insurance and coverage. Uh, I get uh, the total bid price on this is seven hundred and eighty three thousand, one hundred and ninety one dollars and sixty five cents. Seven hundred and eighty three dollars, one hundred and ninety one dollars and sixty five cents. The engineer's estimate was eight hundred and sixty five thousand and eighty dollars. So the uh, we will hand this over to the county engineer for his uh review. That's the only bid we have for that project in Smalls uh Paving.
Now, if you would want, uh, Commissioner, we could do a couple of these. We've got you've got five minutes before we can open the asphalt packing.
Yes, let's let's do that. And then we'll be asking um Bethany, come a little early to that or not?
She is. Yeah, she is.
She's scheduled.
She'll probably be here a little bit earlier.
Okay, good. Yeah, so let's do those.
All right, so first item is to appoint myself, county administrator, as the Knox County Board of Commissioners designated for the Knox County Area Development Foundation Board. Motion, motion to approve.
Now, second that, and just so people know that uh Sam Kilkins is now the president of the ADF. And so we were making those adjustments. So, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, um, then we have the Knox County Engineers' Annual Report for two thousand twenty four was submitted by Cameron. So we're just accepting this and entering it into the formal record.
Well, we have Cameron here. You have anything you wanna say about your highlights on that?
The report, um. Not really. I think the report was, obviously, it's a compilation of all of our departments put together. It's the Highway Department, the Engineers' Office, and the Tax Map Office, and everything that we've done through the past year. Um, we utilize the funds that we get through gas tax and license plate fees as much as we can, and then we still have to supplement our budget with grant funds that come in through there, so. Um, we try to be as productive as we can. This year from last year, we balanced uh kind of road projects and bridge projects. This year, we're probably a little heavier on roadway projects, trying to catch up with some of the resurfacing and asphalt projects in the county, so. But uh, it will be on our website, on County Engineers' website. I think uh, at least last year, maybe the year before, that's on there as well. So if anybody wants to take a look at it, I can visit the website. Good, thank you.
There you go. And what, I was just looking through your report, um, the treaty line, what?
Greenville Treaty Line, yeah. Uh, we actually, it was a joint project in our new county maps. We've kind of highlighted that a little bit higher. Uh, anyways, um, those that aren't familiar with the Greenville Treaty Line, it was a very historic line that was it was a treaty between um the settlers and the Indians.
Is that what this is here?
That's what that runs across there, exactly. That was the Greenville Treaty Line. So anything north of that were Indian lands, anything south of that were lands reserved for settlers. Um, and it's been documented up through there. We've set monumentation. This actually started in Tuscarawas County and and has come to the west. And so we did Holmes County a couple of years ago. This time, we did uh us and Ashland County, because we have a joint line between us. My goal is to kind of keep pushing that out to the west. It goes all over, all the way over to the west. I think Fort Recovery. And Fort Recovery drops down to the Ohio River down that area.
And the treaty line?
Yeah, Greenville Treaty Line, yeah.
It's, and if they go to your report on your website, it they've got the marker that you guys have put in there, but it says it was originally surveyed by Israel Ludlow in July of seventeen ninety seven.
Correct, yeah.
There might have been a few trees in the layback.
What do you think about trees? Um.
John Applesy didn't like them.
The type of survey equipment that they used back in the day. And then also, you gotta realize that this was a treaty line between the settlers and the Indians. You're also trying to keep your scalp at the same time, yeah, when you're surveying across there.
So we had mentioned this morning, Cameron, uh, how's it going with uh you and Darrell with the subdivision?
Yeah, Wendy Fowler, I think, is who we're working with. She's out of Cincinnati area. She is preparing. She sent us a proposal. We both reviewed the proposal. We're agreeable to the proposal that she put together.
Okay.
So I think now she's draft, supposed to be drafting up a final agreement, and hopefully moving that thing forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So did you? We didn't approve that yet, yes.
I motioned to approve.
And I'll second, and those in favor say aye.
Okay.
And then we also have to approve the roofing contract for the Knox County Department of Job and Family Services Opportunity Knox Employment Center. We opened this up a few weeks ago to Master Construction Solutions in the amount of one hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And this is being paid for with the County Permanent Improvement Funding.
Motion to approve. And second, those in favor say aye.
Aye. And Commissioner, that requires both signatures.
And we're at the ten ten as well, so um, we'll do the uh the the bid opening for the asphalt uh patch material. And we have, looks like three um, bids on this. And this is from asphalt, um, from um, Smalls uh yeah, Smalls Asphalt Paving. And that's the top page here. So the the bid from Smalls is three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars, fifty cents. Three hundred and seven dollars, three, three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty cents. That's from Smalls. This next uh bid package is from Kocozing Materials. So, the Kocozing Materials is uh their bid is four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Even?
Even, yes. And then the last bid is from Mid-Ohio Paving. Three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty two dollars. Three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. The uh engineer's bid um, estimate was three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars even. Three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars even. So that is the um, the three bid openings. And so the engineer will look at uh all those, review those, make sure they they meet their requirements that have been put into the specs. And then um once he does that, then the commissioners will award you contracts.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Cameron.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please involve us on November.
Thank you. Uh, Penny, you wanna have that best, and I think she's involved here.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Good morning. Yeah.
And next, we have an update from the Knox County Transit. Bethany, some hours here. And Bethany, thank you. Put you in here a little earlier than you were anticipating.
It's
So thank you for being here with us, giving us some things done here, yeah.
Well, would you like me to start? Are you ready on the website?
Yeah.
I think it's the whatever we've you sent me, but the live version is actually working.
Bethany, when I tried to go in there, I was making me wanna log in or something.
Yeah, it's like makes, it's like client and password is like
Okay.
Password. It's one of those like but yeah, yeah, we're real secure for
Yeah, so we're talking about the new website, uh Knox County Transit.
Uh, basically, we've got some really, really great things going on, and I just wanted to talk about them. Um, this has been a lot of work, a lot of effort, and it's it's very rewarding to start to see things pay off. Um, so, really, I just wanted to kind of talk about too, the rebranding and our new look and our new name, which isn't that new, but you know, it's something, and just what that means to us and why, why are we doing this, you know? Um, I had heard somebody refer to, you know, lipstick on a pig, and it's not that, and I want to definitely um, kind of go over what this means to to us as an organization and to me. Um, so I started a little over two years ago, and I came in, I did not work at Transit, and it, the whole Transit world was completely new to me. And um, I remember sitting down with Jason and, you know, he had this vision, and the commissioners have the vision of having a professionally run organization um that that runs smoothly and has off, good operations. Um, I don't think it's any secret, at the time, there were a lot of complaints about Transit, and the common word used for the way it was running at that time was chaos. And it really was. It was very overwhelming to walk into and um there were, you know, late arrivals, uh, miscommunicated time, miscommunicated times, no rides, overbooking. Um, internally, there was a lot of finger pointing. Everyone knew there were issues, but no one could agree on what they were or who was, you know, responsible for what. Um, it was a culture with biting sarcasm and insults and um people, you know, drivers badmouthing, dispatch, dispatch, badmouthing drivers. That's actually common in most um Transits, from what I hear, is that there's a little bit of tension. Uh, but it's because communication is so essential, and it can be very difficult when you're out on the road versus in a uh office with a computer software. So, um we set to work, you know, I I set to work. It was very, very difficult to even know where to start, to be honest. It was kind of like a tangled ball of yarn. Um, every time we would focus on one issue, it seemed to be connected to about seven other ones that we had to fix first. So, um so it was um I don't know, it was, it was discouraging at many times, and there were times where I wanted to give up. Um, and my staff, I'm sure too. Um, but we hung in there, and that is the main thing that this is about is to, that we stuck with this. And I'm very proud to say that we are a professionally running organization. We have a ninety seven percent on-time performance. We get you there on time. We are clearly communicating when we will be there, the time range. Um, all of those difficulties have fallen off. It is a kind, courteous person that picks up the phone and wants to schedule that ride for you. And our radio discourse is professional and it's, it's valid communication and it's you know, no one has to feel like they're getting beat up when they go to work, cuz I don't think anyone should have to work in that environment. So, um, you know, we really, really worked through. There were a lot of insults and intimidation and and threats, and um, it took a lot to stick to it. So, um this is not just the same organization at all, and and it's hard to convey that for people that don't live it, and they're not in the office all the time. But we, we ourselves who work there notice it is so much different than before. So that is why we are really, really proud, not only to have the new website, but the new name and the new wraps on the buses. Um you know, and and I know people get a little bit self-conscious about, oh, I'm sorry, I called you cat. If you call it cat, that's fine. If you call it mota, that's fine. Call it Knox County Transit, bye. Just, just call us, just call us for a ride. I it's not, you know, something that we're gonna be hitting people over the head with that shame on you for forgetting our name. That's not what it is. You call it cat instead of K C T or what, just call it whatever you want. Call it Transit, so.
I think just quickly for, you know, Cheryl or anybody that's watching. You know, we, we didn't just arbitrarily pick a name. There was a reason, so yeah, when it was cat, it was a separate board. It was not part of the county. It was Knox Area Transit, and that board had voted some time ago. I think Bill was on that board. And they voted to absolve and basically turn it over to the county, and at that time, Job and Family Services uh was running that for the commissioner, so it was really kind of Stella, a sub-organization, and then I don't know, maybe four years ago, the commissioners decided to um, have that be a department that I would oversee, and if, and they were gonna, we'd be more hands-on with it. And we took that from J F S, and it really became a county commissioner department. And as we worked through that, it became apparent, really, it, it needed to be called Knox County Transit, because that's what it is. It belongs to the county now. Um, the commissioners are ultimately responsible for that. And that's why you know, that's why the name. It wasn't like, oh, let's just rebrand to rebrand, but it's ownership of the county uh and of the county commissioners to oversee that and help fund that. So that's kind of where the name came. And I will say, you know, I obviously I'm very proud of Bethany, what she has been able to do, and I, I joke with her, because those first months, every time she would call and say, can I come down and talk to you? I assumed she was coming down to reside. I'm like, oh, boy, she's done. This is the final day. She can't take it anymore. And she would come in and be frustrated, and we would go through problems and solutions, and she would go back out there and and fight to get those implemented again. And I think this is all a combination of her leadership out there over the last two plus years. And I told her, I don't care if you don't know anything about Transit. We just need somebody to run an organization and mold an organization, and I think that's exactly what she has done out there, and you've learned a lot about Transit along the way too, so. Uh, she's done an exceptional job.
Yeah, and yeah, I agree with that. And we appreciate that um, you coming and getting this ship in the direction it really needed to go, so.
Well, I really appreciate the support that I've had and being able to drop by and vet to Jason and and all of that, and um, yeah, it is, it is a great representation of that we are part of the county, and it was the county and the commissioners that turned it around and invested and saw the vision. And um, now we're moving in the right direction of providing all this transportation. Um, and um, and also, if you look at other counties, they're normally just named after their county if they're under the commissioner. So we were kind of yeah, just holding with that pattern. Um, so, yeah, it's been, it's been a journey that I want to take the time to celebrate right now and be proud of what we are and who we are. Um, and then show those new buses and the new logo, because it is representative of all of them.
How many do you have wrapped now?
So I have two buses and one van, and I parked the van out front, so you see that, so.
Everyone's rushing to the window.
Right. So, um, we have another van that is, I think, almost done, and we'll be coming back, and then I think we will start to do this kind of launches. We'll start to do the ones that are gonna be driven around, and then you'll start to see. We didn't wanna confuse people and and hit the roads before we told people about it. So now, um, it takes about a week to get a bus done. Um hopefully, once he has the measurements and the system for the same kind of bus, he can get them out a little bit faster, but everything we've given him has been completely different than the next vehicle, so it takes a little bit of time to reset and and all that, but we're using a company in Newark that is absolutely fantastic, so. Um, so yes, we have a few buses and a van, and we will start to hit the roads with that. Um so I think, yeah, we can just go through the, the website. This is part of feedback that we received um in several meetings and just across um, the public of getting better information out there and getting all of our information. So this is the homepage. Um, what we put on there was uh basically our services. So if you click those arrows next to demand response, you're gonna see the hours of operation. So we know it can be a little bit confusing, because we have different services. So we do have, if you notice, the Mount Vernon Flex routes are up there. They are not up and running yet, but that will be in June. That's what the plan is for those hours. Um, so that just helps, we're hoping that helps folks kind of differentiate between um, the services and know when they are available. We get a lot of questions about that. People are still surprised that we start at five A M. Um, or go till seven P M, so.
What is the flex route?
So we're calling it the flex route. So it is not going to be a traditional fixed route where there are just stops. Um, the technical term with the F D A or F T A is um deviated route, but that can be a mouthful, and that's difficult to understand. So it means that we have our stops and they have times, and we will be at the stop on time. But if we need to go off and pick somebody up that's two blocks away in between those stops, we can go off the route, pick them up, and come back on and join it. So um, that gives a lot more flexibility. That gives maybe folks in wheelchairs that can't get to the stop, the opportunity to still ride the rounds. Um, and kind of, I don't know, it's kind of a a me, a middle ground for the riders. You know, we can come by your house, pick you up, if if that works in our schedule. Uh, maybe to kind of get them used to riding the routes, and then maybe they'll get comfortable and just walk you.
So, but so there'll be actual spots that you'll be going to?
Yes.
And when will you have those um solidified as to where the stops?
Yeah, so I have the final draft on my computer. So it should be this week that we will start to release that. Um, and have the conversations with folks about where those stops are, if that's allowed. Um, but we have been testing. We've had about three different versions that we've tested and realized oh, this area of town gets really stopped up, and that's not, we're not gonna be able to stay on time if we go there versus going this way. Let's take it this direction versus that direction. So I've had a lot of really good help with that.
Somebody had asked me, and I, I told I get the answer, so.
Right.
Commissioner.
So you're on the
And people buy a pass or gift certificate type thing for a loved one or somebody, and then all they have to do is present that to the driver to get, you know.
Right, so the way that we do it, it wouldn't be an actual pass, but everyone is, um, every rider has an account in the system, and there is a balance. There's like, you can put money on their balance.
Like a commissary.
Right, and then we just take the ride off of that. So they wouldn't even have to present anything.
Just their name.
Yeah, they just
So in order for them to put, someone to put money on their account, they just come to?
They can call us, and we can do a credit card over the phone.
Okay.
Um, or they can present cash. They could ma, they could mail a check or whatever. Um, we have, we have everyone doing different things. We
I'll give the answer, because I was like
Yeah, yeah, not an actual paper pass system, but you can put the balance on the account of another person. Um, the only thing with that is it's hard for us to monitor. Sometimes people ask for a refund, so if you don't want them to, you know, ask for the refund and get that cash pocketed, that's the only catch. We can't really police that, so. Um that's what we have at this point. Um, and I think that's what we will be continuing with the, the new software system.
Credit card can also be used or not?
Yeah, over the phone right now. So hopefully, soon we'll have online payment abilities. Um, when we get, you know, figure out who we can use for that. Um, our credit card services are very outdated, so we have to do a whole big push to update everything um, with the county when that happens. So hopefully, online credit card payments will be coming soon.
So when they use a credit card, I assume there's a fee also?
There, there are.
Every credit card.
Yeah, there is, so, um yeah, so that's something that we're, we're still working on. Um, okay, I think that's the only, if you scroll down, nothing else. Okay, so yeah, basically, they just say um, routes and services is gonna take you to the services page. We can go there.
So was, uh, so that photo is is that shooting down High Street? Do we have someone that has a portion in town?
Well, they caught us as a right move, right?
I know, too.
I don't know.
I know, too.
One, two, so.
I shot that. I was just downtown.
You just happened to catch. It's an excellent. It's an excellent, so actually, a lot of Andrew's photos are on this, and they are very, very eye-catching and very well done, so, good job.
You're very nice.
Um, yeah, so that's, this is the page for our services. It has, if you scroll down, um you know, just general information. This is, this is very fun. If you keep scrolling down.
So that's our new van.
That's the new bus. Yeah, actually, if you wanna see that. That is what it looks like. Uh, that blue and
We kind of played off the county's new
Right.
colors.
Yeah, so the ones we have out there now are white.
Right.
So this huge change and
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz there are other white vehicles that look a little bit like ours.
Yes.
So that'll be a good distinction.
Yes, it's been a little confusing. There are actually a lot of different organizations that have one or two buses that look exactly like ours, so. So this is good. Um and it, it definitely dresses it up a bit. So this is the really, really awesome interactive map. So this is our Kenyon Route. Um, it's the only route that's up right now, since it's the only active one. You can click on the schedule. You can see when we are going to be at each stop. It zooms in on the map. You can zoom in, zoom out on the map. Um, and it gives you up in the corner, uh, the next stop time for, for each of the stops. Um, and then we also have the, I've been successful in getting the coding information to send to the people who made the map um, so that we could have a live dot, so you can see where the bus is, yes. So this is everything you could ask for for a route, to know exactly when we're running and where we are and where we will be next. So this is a huge improvement, and um it's been really, really exciting to see this come together. We'll also have this for all of the Mount Vernon Flex routes to make that easier for people. Um, this is, the website is also mobile friendly, so they can This is, the website is also mobile friendly, so they can just pull up the website on their phone and see a map and see when the bus is coming and when your next scheduled stop is.
I think commissioners, you'd be surprised how that seems so simple, right? When you look at that. But we have sat and I've been in so many meetings trying to to make this happen. And it is, to get the dot which is coming, is extremely complex and.
It's a chip on the buses or something.
Yeah, we're using our camera system. They they have GPS. So you could use the tablets too, but I know sometimes that's a little difficult.
We met two years ago, you and I did with Kenyon, because the students, they could figure out a way to do this for us. And we're like, have at it. And it.
Didn't work out.
Couldn't get it. I mean, yeah, it's just.
Very complex and I don't think anyone realized, you know, because it's like, well, Domino's has it. Well, Domino's is probably paying a pretty penny to some programmers to get that.
Well, that, that they're a major corporation.
And so we had to add over five hundred thousand pizza shops.
Right, right.
And this was a commissioner funded endeavor. You know, we we hired Folgren more time out of Columbus to help design this website and make this piece happen. So it's, I mean, you've really been doing, having lifting lately on this, so many emails flying around like crazy.
Yes.
We've been probably doing this for well over a year trying to get it to this point.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty cool to finally see it in live.
Yeah. And I actually found through Licking County, found this, it's a specialty company that does these maps. So it really is a specialized skill at this point still to be able to design it. It's a, you know, GIS coding and all of that.
So essentially your, your flex routes will have this and people will see where the buses are coming off of. If you're standing at a bus stop, you'll be able to see where it's at and.
Right.
See it coming.
Right, which will hopefully, I mean, that's the biggest barrier. The hardest thing is communication, right? Just communicating what we're doing when. And so this tool will be really valuable for us. So.
It's exciting.
It is, it is. It's kind of taken us to the next level. So is there anything else on the bottom of this? I don't think there. Okay, just the operating hours again, which we already saw that. Okay, and then the next tab is the riding Knox County Transit. So this is where a lot of the information is for just kind of the the boundaries and the rules of riding and what to expect. I mean, for anybody that hasn't used transit, it can be overwhelming. It can be, you know, you don't wanna, it it can be scary, you know, maybe if you're older and and this is something new. So we tried to get as much information on without it being too cluttered just to to kind of express what what to expect. How do you book your ride? Right now, you still have to call in and schedule. You really need to call in and schedule. When there's routes, you can do the routes. And then just some of the different boundaries we've had to have and the parameters just to make sure that everyone gets where they need to go safely and on time. So all of those, actually, if you go up into the, all of those little arrows drop down into some different like bullet points. So that's been something that has been a gap, a communication gap before, you know, we didn't really have a lot of information out of just where, what we expect and and what to, what the riders should expect to keep the rides moving safely. So and then also down at the bottom, if you do scroll, we've got that beautiful picture. This talks about our our accessibility and our assistance. So that's a whole other thing. We are pretty much the only people that will be able to do mobility devices or wheelchairs if you're under sixty in the county. So we do have a lot of wheelchair rides and a lot of different scenarios that play out. So just try and you get some of those parameters up so that people know what to expect and they feel safe and feel good about booking a ride with us.
So seeing the service animals up there, I've seen people with snakes around their necks and other animals that aren't considered that, in my view, service animals.
Right, right.
Do you think we're going to put a definition as to servicing animals?
So our policy is that animals can ride no matter what if they are contained and controlled by the owner. Because we have people that take their pets to the the vet. So that has actually helped us in in that we don't need to distinguish if they're service animals or not, as long as you're controlling them. I know that other transits have a hard time with that. Yeah, the snake doesn't really help you if you have a seizure or whatever. So. Haven't had anyone challenge it yet. So, you know, I think, you know, as long as they're controlling it, then we're, we're okay. We try not to make a big deal of it. So. Some other things that we've come across that we just wanted to communicate, you know, if it's an emergency call nine one one, we're not gonna, we're not gonna zoom you to the ER. And we're not medical professionals and we're not home healthcare assistants, you know. So there are limits to what the drivers can do. We do want to help and we want to get folks to where they need to go. But if there's assistance and lifting or medical assistance, then you can have, you can have an assistant ride for free. Bring someone along.
Does it also clarify our child policy as to?
Yes, yeah.
Is that on there too?
Yes, it's one of the the dropdown.
All the drivers are CPR certified.
Yes, yes. Yes, in first aid. So there's the seatbelt and the.
Yeah, they're.
All minors under thirteen.
So and then at the, I think at the very bottom, we've got the ADA and the Title VI compliance. So there's a lot of that. There's forms, policies, all of that good stuff. That's, that's that. And that's kind of the most extensive. We've got a tab for schedule a ride. So we already have this feature, but it's not as displayed as nicely of you can type in your request on this form. We do ask that you have an email address that you can respond to because we will email back the confirmation or if there's some sort of issue with booking it. So this is another option if people don't want to call or if the phones are busy. It gives folks a way to schedule their ride. It also, I mean, I like this because it gives people a written communication of when to expect your ride. And I know that a few writers have expressed that they really appreciate that too. It just kind of solidifies things a little bit more. So we're continuing to do that. We do ask that you give us twenty four hours just because we don't want to miss any last minute. You know, if you're trying to get a ride in an hour, just in case we haven't been able to catch the email, we don't want to have that miscommunication. So we do try to have this be rides that are requested in advance. The About Us tab is, there's that, there's that building. It's pretty short, but I did come up with a few different things that I would call values. But also just the the driving factors that we have. If you scroll down a little bit, really what has propelled us through is the compassion for people. And my drivers are incredibly compassionate. They really care about the riders. So do the people in dispatch. They really care that people get the care that they need. And that has propelled us through all of the difficulty. And then also, we are just really proud about what we do as far as connecting people and building community. We know that there are some people that are very isolated and we are their only connecting point to the outside world. And we keep them independent. And our tagline actually under Knox County Transit is connecting our community. So that's kind of the vision that we have moving forward and using those three values as as our guide. And then, yeah, we just have a tab for contact information and feedback. That's been another thing that we didn't really have a great place for people to, they could get my email off the previous site. But this gives folks a form. They can let us know what their experience was. They can ask questions. And it just gives a little bit more of an option to get some of that feedback sooner so that we can do something about if there was an issue. You know, we've run into learning about things maybe that happened three months ago. And it's like, well, I can't pull the footage from that. I can't really address it. And and I, you know, again, this this whole website is showing that we do hear the feedback. We do hear people. And you need better communication and we're making the action on it. So it's very important to contact us and and try to get things resolved instead of just, I don't know, rolling your eyes and moving on kind of thing. So it's, it's very helpful for us and we do take the feedback seriously. And then we've got some of the management team on here to contact. So that is, that is the website in a nutshell. So, yeah.
Very nice.
It is. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, crazy question. Okay. No, that's great. Actually, did we go to the fairs? I wonder if we skipped that, like. Go onto services page. So what we, I'm glad you asked that. So right now, going into May, what we're going to be doing is kicking off Fair Free May. So it will be in county is completely fair free. Try going down, maybe scrolling down more. There it is, routes and fairs. Then you gotta hit that, that. And then starting in June, the Mount Vernon area in that Zone One will be a dollar. That already currently is.
Each way.
Each way. Yeah, per trip, per trip. And then that Zone Two is is expanded. You can see that it has Frederight Town, Howard, Danville, a little bit of Centerburg in there. That's all going to be three dollars each way. And then the edge of the county that is quite, quite a bit out there is a five dollar each way trip. We are rolling out out of county fairs as well. So it's five dollars for the trip fee plus a dollar per mile. And then twenty minutes per hour if there's wait time. And then if you, what else was I going to? Our night buses still is currently fair free and the route will be fair free as well. So that's, that's going to be rolling out. Basically, May will be fair free and then in June, those will be rolling out.
Is it fair free for going out of county too?
No. I don't think we could do that. I don't think we.
Why do you think we could either?
Right, no, that's a good clarification.
Can you take me to East End and wait while I go to the movie and all?
Right, right, right. Wait. Can you scroll down even more, Andrea, and we'll go to the discounts. Here's the other thing. We are expanding our fifty percent discount. So right now it's seniors at sixty five and older and people with disabilities. So now we sixty and older, it's a fifty percent discount. So it would be a dollar fifty each way in that three dollar zone. And also veterans, students and first responders will just need a a photo ID of of what your, you know, whatever status you have in the application. And we will give you the fifty percent discount. So.
So one, the students.
Yes.
I'm under eighteen. I have to have an adult with me because I, adults also get to fifty percent because they're required to ride with me.
So if they're thir- between thirteen and eighteen, they can ride alone, but under on fifty percent. Yeah. But if they are under thirteen, what we have been doing is allowing the chaperone as an attendant to drive for free. So it would be the discounted rate for the student. So, because we don't want that to be a barrier. If you really, really have nothing else and you need your child to get somewhere, you know, we don't want that to be a barrier that you have to be with them and a cost barrier.
I think what all this kind of shares, I, you know, Bethany gets frustrated because, you know, there is a negative connotation of transit at times. And I think, you know, people that utilize the service three years ago, five years ago, they need to give it a try now because it is vastly different. Doesn't mean the organization's perfect. Doesn't mean they're never going to be late or never have an issue. But they're working hard and the the staff that we have in place now, it it's just a different, completely different.
It's really inexpensive too, I mean, if you think about it.
Yes, and I, and I think what should tell you the difference, which Mr. Lester hasn't been here in the past, but we used to get calls a lot, didn't we, Bill, about upset customers? We, you know, again, knock on wood, but, you know, I haven't had a call or a complaint in probably six or eight months that says that they called down here. So that also tells us that things are running smoothly. And Bethany's doing a great job. So. Interstaff, yeah, interstaff as well.
So is the website up and running now?
It is, just went live maybe fifteen minutes ago.
So how how do I access the website?
Yeah, so it's knoxcountytransit.com. But not that, but it's just knoxcountytransit.com. Are you going to test it? There it is. There it is. There it is.
Commissioner, she did bring down a van if you want.
I I've actually had a personal. She was a gracious host and gave it to me and the buses.
So, yeah, it's just, like I said, we're just going to take the time to celebrate. It's, it's, it's easy to just keep my, for me, keep my head down and just keep pushing on and, oh, we gotta fix this and this and this. But I do want to take the time to to say thank you to you for your support and to my staff. And and to, there were different organizations that did support us and say, yes, I believe you can get there. And that was huge to have any type of encouragement through this process. So we're excited and and just want people to know that we are listening to the feedback. A lot of this has been in the works for a long time. And I'm like, just, just wait, we're getting there, we're getting there. So we're finally there with, in the lower fares to make that affordable for folks. So it's a, it's an exciting time.
And we're still working on location.
Yeah.
The last little.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. I didn't see Courtney out.
Yeah, she is. Yeah.
Yeah, now I see her. So good morning, Courtney.
Morning, Derek.
I have Courtney Lara with us, our Knox County Human Resources person. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. At the beginning of the month, benefit coordinator, Pam Schiefer, and I went to Sevco's annual meeting. They had some updates for us and that included, in accordance with House Bill, three fifteen A and B effective April second of twenty twenty five. They're going to cover up to twenty five hundred dollars for individuals aged twenty one and under for hearing aids every four years. So that's some, some great news for those folks that need that. And also the House Bill Section B, I believe it was, co-pays for occupational and physical therapy along with some chiropractic care can't exceed the co-pay that your plan has for your primary care physician. So what used to be billed at forty dollars as a co-pay for those kinds of services are the same now as primary care, which is twenty dollars. So that was a, a welcome change. They did kind of give us a warning that in general, they expect healthcare costs to rise specifically with regard to generic pharmaceuticals and think implants and devices that are coming to us from overseas. Things like that or generic prescription medications. Many, a a large majority of them are made in India. So they were just kind of giving us a heads up that those things may be. That's what they identified. But the renewal meeting will be August twenty ninth. That'll be a virtual meeting. And then after that, we'll receive our renewal rates for twenty twenty six.
Did they talk about trend? What the anticipated trend to me?
They didn't identify any specific trend as percentage wise. They didn't identify any specific trend as, um, um, percentage wise, right? Um, but just kind of a, expect things to be rising because the. Cost of most everything is on the rise. So, uh, we should know more. In later in the summer. Um, just as a reminder, the Ohio County Scholarship, which is sponsored by CCAO. That's the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. The deadline is this Friday and every, um. District in CCAO, um, one student is eligible to receive two thousand dollars if they're planning a career in public service. So if, uh, we have graduating high schoolers out there that wanna join us here at the county in, in public service. There's this scholarship available to them. And if they go to the CCO, CCAO website, they'll be able to, um. Glean that information. But as I said, the deadline is this Friday, May second. Yeah, I believe it's May already.
Do you know if we've ever had anyone?
I don't know. No. Um, PM and Jason and I met with Cindy Herring. That's our benefit, uh, specialist with Sevco on April sixteenth. And we went over all of the twenty twenty-four data, um, medical claims last year. Were up thirty-four percent and prescription claims were up thirty-eight percent. Now, we expect prescription costs to be a little bit lower because Sevco did away with the coverage of the GPL ones. Starting on January first of this year. So we don't have any data yet on what that looks like for them. Um, we also found out the emergency room use is on the rise and they identified ninety-one visits. That they deemed to be quote, uh, uh, avoidable. Um, where perhaps someone went in and they didn't actually need emergency services. Um, and so we did send some communication out to all staff with a nice little chart. Um, trying to help them identify, yes. Yes.
I think we did find out kind in that data. Some of that is maybe a little misleading because you could, you could have chest pain.
Yes.
And go to the E R.
Rightfully so.
Rightfully so. We go to the E R and then, you know, oh, you have indigestion or there's some other condition. Then it gets coded as. You didn't need to come to E R because of your condition. Well, you, you probably did need to go to E R because you're having chest pains.
Right.
So there's no way to. Really get that data. We couldn't. They, they don't break that up.
Did, did they give you an hour? You know what I mean by that? Cause urgent cares close at.
Right.
And then was, so was the emergency room visits ticked up because of?
We didn't get an hourly or, you know, a breakdown of when the usage was more than others. Uh, we do have a free telehealth, um, available twenty-four seven that folks can, um, you know, get online. And I'm certainly not discouraging our employees or their families not to go to the E R. If it's essential, absolutely. We want you to get the cure that you, that you need. But our community also has a lot of other, um. You know, facilities available, but the hospital just opened a walk-in clinic that people, you don't have to have a primary care physician. Within their group of doctors to go in. Um, our own Knox Public Health has a health center. And you can actually establish primary care through that facility. So, um, we just wanna make sure our employees have the best information. They have for whatever's going on for their situation. Um, I attended B W C's Safety Congress, the sixteenth and the seventeenth of this month. Yeah, there was a virtual option, which is great. You don't get quote unquote credit for taking the virtual option. Like it versus if you go in person. However, um. Andrea is on the Safety Council, uh, Committee and attends all of those meetings here. So we will get our, our full credit for that. Um, but it was a really, um, beneficial, um, event and it's completely free to employers. So I encourage folks around the county, um, business owners and things like that to keep that in mind for next year. With Andrew's help, uh, we're working to update the H R landing page on the county's website. Uh, make it a little more user friendly for folks. We want as much information, uh, accessible with a click of a button as possible. So thank you, Andrew, for your help. May sixth, man, that's next week. I'm gonna be attending Labor Arbitration Institute in Cleveland. That was a recommended training by our prosecutor, Mr. McConville. So I'm excited for that one day training. And that same day is the Opportunity Knox Job Fair, um, Shottan Road. And PM and Andrea will be attending on Knox County's behalf to talk about, um, employment opportunities with the, with the county. Sevco hosted a wellness contacts meeting on the eleventh. And for now, things are gonna stay status quo for their wellness program in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So they'll have the Sevco Rewards two hundred through Anthem and then the monetary incentive thirty dollars per member. Per year based on October's enrollment numbers that we can use for wellness initiatives. And just as a reminder, our wellness year ends early, June thirtieth. Um, Andrea Sellers, our safety coordinator, is working with E M A staff to set up meetings with the offices in the service center. To talk about emergency plans. So the second floor northeast corner. Uh, we're partnering together Parks, H R, Matt and Litter and Recycling. And then the folks in regional planning, we're gonna have a meeting all together since there's not very many of us and come up with some. Um, come up with some plans for. That end of the building. I have included the. Current staffing levels. So we have positions open and available on our website. If you go to the county's website, click. Employment opportunities. We are looking for a full-time dispatcher in nine one one. A few positions with J F S, including eligibility referral specialist and public assistant. Ohio Stark caseworker and childcare eligibility licensing aide in children's services. And then summer job coach out at Opportunity Knox.
Still looking for that. See, you filled a couple of those.
Yes, we have. Yeah. Um, Knox County Transit, part-time drivers. Board of Elections, Election Technology Specialist and Elections Administrator. Highway workers, mechanics, seasonal help for engineer and then patrol deputies with the sheriff's office. We participated in five interviews since the last time I saw you onboarded nine and offboarded three. And, uh, special shout out to Andrea Sellers. Today's her birthday.
No.
Uh, and, uh, fun fact, tomorrow's Adopt a Shelter Pet Day. So if anyone's looking to add. Uh, four-legged family member or maybe three-legged. I don't know what they have out there, but, um. Knox County Dog Shelter open ten to four tomorrow. And if you're not looking to add a fuzzy, uh. Pet to your, to your family, maybe consider volunteering or dropping off some dog food or cleaning supplies. I'm sure they would appreciate it. So. Questions, concern, feedback.
A, a good P R at the end there for the dog showers.
Full circle.
Well, we always appreciate the, the information you've provided to us.
Yeah, thank you.
You're most welcome. You're welcome. Have a great day.
Me too.
Thank you.
At least you're smiling.
Okay. No reason not to.
Thank you.
Well, yeah. Four sets of minutes to sign and some in the bill is the sign. And I think that's all we have. And that will be at the historical society this afternoon.
It's. Do you have anything you wanna share?
No, I have nothing.
And I would just simply report to people that, uh, the Board of Review, um, went to twenty different properties yesterday. Um, and, yeah, have done that evaluation and that those entities, individuals would be receiving a report from the. Honor's Office, uh, about our, our review for that. And then done, which then at this time, we have also opportunity for, um, um, you to be able to. Share if you wanna share with the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, I did have something to share.
Yeah, you'll, you'll need to stand and, and, uh, state the names. So those who are watching will be able to. And where you're from.
Center.
Okay. Yes, stars.
Um, is, did, well, I was hoping Jen was gonna be here. I have a statement. But did she send an email or place a phone call? I think that she was not gonna attend today's meeting.
Um, I know Jason had communicated with her.
No, she does. This was a scheduled day off for her. She was gonna be out. So, no.
Okay.
No email or text or anything.
She already scheduled the day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, if there's no other business other than signing those, take a motion to adjourn.
Andrew. Got a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that if we see a adjourn this time. Thank you.